Would like to call to order the June 17th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome everybody. It's good to have so many folks with us tonight. At this time, I would ask if everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are very happy to have with us tonight Pastor Terry Thompson from West Cabarrus Church
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, I thank you that you've blessed us with such a wonderful, beautiful area of the world in which to live. Cabarrus County is a wonderful place. May we honor you. We thank you for your graciousness to us and by using our resources to better the life of our citizens, minister to others, and be pleasing to you. I thank you that we have government leaders that still value the aspect of prayer to the Almighty. Your word calls them ministers. I pray that we will unite in service to you and to our neighbors by governing in a manner that is pleasing to you. Your word clearly tells us that you will graciously and generously give us the wisdom needed for decisions that need to be made that will affect all of us. God, we ask that you would grant our request for that wisdom. We recognize that we are a needy people in honor of your divine guidance. Your word also clearly guides us with principles for caring, for the environment, for helping our fellow men and women, personal responsibility, financial prudence, and so much more. May we seek your face through your word. And lastly, dear Father, I ask personal blessings for each of these commissioners. I thank them for their service. I ask you to bless them with good health. Please bless their families. We submit ourselves, our lives, and our community for your purposes. We come before you humbly, but we also come before you boldly, asking for these things because of the permission given to us through your son. Amen.
Thank you. We appreciate you being with us Reverend Thompson. We're also happy to have with us up front tonight our youth commissioner, Kason Gardner. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And we would like to also introduce one of our newest folks to Cabarrus County Government, and that's our new deputy county manager, Rodney Harris. Rodney, if you would stand and be recognized. Rodney comes to us from the city of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County, and we are delighted to have you here with us. Welcome. At this time, I would entertain a discussion of the approval or correction of the minutes, and all of you have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion that we amend, adjust, or accept the minutes as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 29, and addition moving F-24 to C-1.
Okay. And you jumped ahead of me there onto the agenda. We were on the minutes, but...
Oh, so sorry. I'm so anxious to get that done.
If somebody will second that motion, we'll go ahead and take care of it.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with one change, moving from the consent agenda, F-24, to C-1 under recognitions and presentations. And I would ask to amend that to also add item number five on recognitions and presentations, if that's good with your second as well.
Yes.
Okay. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we now move to the approval or correction of the minutes.
I can also make a motion to approve the minutes, if you would like.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to recognitions and presentations. And our first recognition is recognition of K-9 Jerry on his retirement, and I think Jerry is with us tonight, and Commissioner Honeycutt is going to handle that recognition.
So Jerry is retiring after seven years of service. So we always recognize our humans after years of service, so why not our four-legged friends who have helped protect us for 49 years? So that's a long time in dog years. So as Jerry retires, we wanted to take the opportunity to thank him for his service. There's no telling how many citizens in Cabarrus County he has helped through detection of items and circumstances that might have been in our way. So thank you, Jerry. And for your service, we have reviewed a goody basket tonight. Here you go. It's all taped in there, so... There you go. You enjoy, okay? Thank you for your service, baby. Okay. Good deal.
Very good.
Would Jerry's handler like to say anything?
I'm not a great speaker, but just thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I want to thank the former sheriff, Brad Riley, for giving me the opportunity back, you know, 12 years ago, and the current sheriff, Ann Shaw, for letting me continue to do this, and I appreciate it. And thank you, everybody.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate your service and Jerry's service. Thank you for being with us tonight. And thank you, Commissioner Honeycutt. Okay. And so our next item is boards and committee recognition, and we're happy to have Michelle Wilson from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Wilson, and I am the vice chair of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, often referred to as the JCPC. I'm honored to be here tonight to help recognize a colleague and someone I very much admire, Angela Ward, for her years of service on the JCPC. I'd like to briefly explain the goal of the council and then highlight a few of the many ways Angela has touched our communities. Cabarrus County receives $310,611 annually to put towards programs that reduce and prevent juvenile crime in Cabarrus. The goal is to create community-based alternatives to youth development centers that protect the community and the youth. As such, we need informed leaders around the table to provide insight and feedback to ensure we are choosing sustainable programs that will reach most of the youth and their families. Angela has served this council well for the past 12 years, from 2007 to 2019, as she has served in various ways by monitoring our programs, participating in multiple risk and needs assessments, and being a strong voice during our allocation committee meetings. Her love of the community and her commitment to the folks in it are demonstrated every day through her actions. She has worked tirelessly over the past 25 years within Connapulous City Schools in Cabarrus County as the coordinator of Behavioral Health and Community Liaison to create awareness around homelessness, substance use and abuse, and human trafficking. She has also worked with families to reduce truancy by supporting and participating in truancy court, and worked on projects to reduce food insecurity and malnutrition. She's spent hours advocating for resources, recruiting volunteers, and participating in committees like the JCPC to ensure the programs and resources are available for our youth and their families. Her goal has always been to empower youth by encouraging them and supporting them. Her belief that children can thrive within a supportive environment led her to starting the Second Chance Learning Program, which provides a little extra support to those who need help reaching their goals to be a high school graduate. Even though Angela has retired from Connapulous City Schools, I am certain we have not seen the last of her in places where she can provide insight, be a positive influence on our youth, and continue to model such devotion to strengthening our community one person at a time. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing Angela, and I'd like to thank Angela for all of her efforts over the years and her wide reach in our community. She's not here this evening, so we will make sure she gets this.
Great. Thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you.
I have known Angela for many years and had the opportunity to serve with her on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. I think last year, she was also the recipient of the Ann Lukitis Award by the Cabarrus Partnership for Children. So she has certainly made many important contributions to our community, and we appreciate you recognizing her. And we move now to Jimmy Lentz has a recognition also.
As mentioned numerous times before me, it is with bittersweet reasoning we come before you tonight. Master paramedic Kristy Coley was hired on October 9th, 1989, beginning her long and impactful career with Cabarrus County EMS. She's going to retire on June 28th with nearly 30 years of service. She has served her community, profession, community and profession well as a paramedic, a mentor, a compassionate provider. She has served as a volunteer and full-time provider, offering her services in a way that provided a ray of light to those experiencing bad days. She is truly an example of what it means to accept EMS as a profession, as a way of life rather than a job. She attended and received her degree in emergency medical science and obtained her national registry paramedic credential. You could always count on Kristy's ambulance being very well stocked and prepared for service, always setting the example in professional development, patient care, and job performance. I can't think of another person who has always been so positive. She always had a smile on her face, and Kristy has served every shift as a field medic, which is an incredible accomplishment. She embodies a concept of servant leadership, and Kristy left our mark on the profession, your patience, and Cabarrus County EMS. Thank you for your service. With that, I'd like to give you a plaque recognizing your 30 years of faithful service, and we certainly hope you enjoy your retirement on the 28th. Would you like to say anything, or the floor is yours?
Been here a long time. I trained with Jimmy. I trained Justin. It's time to move on. I will say I'm kind of scared about retiring. I'm going to do what Ralph Waldo Emerson says, "Always be afraid. Always do what you're afraid to do."
Great.
So on behalf of the county commissioners and the citizens of Cabarrus County, and it's my honor to present to you this clock in recognition of your 30 years of service, not that you need a clock anymore, I don't guess. So be free to do as you please, but know how much we appreciate your service to all the citizens of Cabarrus County, but in particular, the ones who you directly impacted from your service. So thanks so much, and best of luck in retirement.
Thank you.
We certainly wish you well in your retirement. And now Perry Gabriel from Active Living in Parks has a proclamation.
The National Recreation and Park Association each July recognizes that as the Parking Recreation Month across the nation, and tonight we'd like to read the proclamation for Cabarrus County. This year's slogan is called "Game On." I think each of you have a copy of our upcoming activities that are related to our activities in July, but the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas parks, recreation, and senior center programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Cabarrus County, whereas our parks, recreation, and senior centers are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas parks, recreation, and senior center programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and to improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas parks, recreation, and senior center programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas parks, recreation, and senior center areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Cabarrus County recognizes the benefits derived from parks, recreation resources, and senior centers, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month, adopted this 17th day of June 2019.
Very good. Thank you, Perry. And so at this time, do I hear a motion to adopt the proclamation as presented?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to item number four. And this is a proclamation recognizing the 20th anniversary of the Cabarrus Family Medicine Residency Program. And they will be having a celebration for that on June 28th. And if this proclamation is passed, I plan to attend and present it to them, and I will read that at this time. Cabarrus Family Medicine Residency Program 20th Anniversary Recognition Proclamation. Whereas the Cabarrus Family Medicine Residency Program was founded in 1996 as a solution to a growing primary care crisis in Cabarrus County, and whereas Cabarrus Family Medicine Residency Program was the inspiration of Dr. Allan Dobson, who founded Cabarrus Family Medicine in Mount Pleasant in 1983, and whereas the goal of Cabarrus Family Medicine Residency Program was to train family physicians for small-town and rural North Carolina, and whereas to date, there have been 160 graduates practicing in 24 states, including Hawaii and the U.S. Virgin Islands. Several have served in the military, including duty in Iraq. 104 of the graduate physicians practice in North Carolina. 44 practice in Cabarrus County. 20 in Concord, 8 in Connapulous, 6 in Harrisburg, 4 in Mount Pleasant, and 3 in Midland. 4 are in Rowan County, 4 in Stanley County, 1 in Union County, 11 in Gaston, Lincoln, Cleveland, and Catawba Counties, and 15 in Mecklenburg County. And whereas the Cabarrus Family Medicine Residency Program will be celebrating their 20th anniversary on June 28th, 2019, and now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners celebrates the 20th anniversary of this distinguished program that has transformed the physicians in Cabarrus County, across the state, and around the world. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation as read?
I move.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And item number four, which was added to the agenda, we're very happy to have Chief Deputy Childress from Mooresville here for a presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Deputy Chief Gerald Childress with the Mooresville Police Department. On Saturday evening, May 4th, 2019, the town of Mooresville lost one of our public servants, K-9 Officer Jordan Harris Sheldon, in the line of duty. Although we hear of this type of senseless lack so often in the news, no one is truly prepared for it when it happens in the core of your community. Officer Sheldon served the Mooresville Police Department and the town of Mooresville with pride, integrity, and commitment. The support we received in the days that followed his loss overwhelmed us. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the town of Mooresville to simply say thank you. This plaque says, "The town of Mooresville extends its sincere gratitude and appreciation to Cabarrus County for their assistance and support in our community's time of need."
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here, and we're glad that we could be of service. Okay. We move now to the informal public comment portion of our meeting. I have three cards, and we will have a public hearing on our budget a little later. So if I call out your name and you would prefer to talk then, you can wait till then. You can talk at both times if you so choose, but those options are available. So our first card is from Kim Beyonde. And if you would, please state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
Kimberly Beyonde, 928 Pine Ridge Street, Southeast, Concord, North Carolina, 28025. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Working as a teacher, especially in Cabarrus County, has definite perks. We have an enviable system with great kids surrounded by a wonderful community. And of course, that aha moment when a student finally understands something, the thank-you emails from first-year college students who tell you how glad they are that you were so tough on them, the kid who hated reading who now carries around a new novel every week, these are the moments you know you have made a real difference in someone's life. It is also true, however, that Bank of America has yet to accept aha moments and thank-you emails for mortgages and car payments. Food Lion so far refuses to exchange my student's newfound love of reading for groceries. Teachers cannot feed their families on smiles and on heartwarming memories. And as for the teachers of Cabarrus County, too many have made the reluctant decision to leave, either to leave the county to teach where supplements are higher, or to leave teaching altogether. Teachers have approached the Board of Education, asking for a continued increase in our supplements, not just for this year, and not stopping at 9%, and now we approach you, the county commissioners. We know that almost $45 million goes to schools' operational costs, according to the figure provided by Mr. Lynn Schu at the joint meeting with the Commissioners and Board of Education in April of 2018. We also know that our population is growing, as Mrs. Diane Honeycutt said at the same meeting, and that neither side can control growth, and it does bring its own set of challenges. We wager that the schools in Cabarrus County are an important reason for the growth here. We have a desirable system right now. People with kids want to come to our county because of our schools. The county commissioners need to realize that if we cannot maintain a high level of professionalism in our schools, then our growth will stop, and we will stagnate. And right now, teachers are leaving for greener pastures, and it is not a potential problem, but a problem we have today. And it is not a new problem. In November 2014, when both Mr. Schu and Mr. Keiger served on the Board of Education, Chief Financial Officer Kelly Klutz talked about the necessity of increasing teacher supplements, too, in her words, "Stop this wound from bleeding." Mr. Schu, who at the time was moving from the Board to serve on county commission, stated he would do the best he could and noted he was in favor of the proposed supplemental increase, while then Chairman Keiger agreed and also spoke in favor of the proposed increases. Five years later, here we are. Cabarrus County teachers still need and deserve that increase, and it needs to be commensurate with the surrounding counties. To keep and attract talent, you must offer incentive. To keep our schools strong, you have to have strong teachers in every classroom. I can't fill up my gas tank with aha moments, and my children do not eat good intentions. If you want good teachers, you need to pay for them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Fulton.
My name is Jim Fulton. I live at 224 Ingleside Drive here in Concord. Good evening, Chairman Schu, County Manager Downs, members of the board. I'm here this evening to discuss several issues related to school funding and the process used to develop education policy in the county. Ever since opposition mobilized against the closure of Beverly Hills and became apparent that the superintendent and the Board of Education were committed to a plan that also included closing McAllister and Coltrane Webb, members of this board, when they have found themselves in receipt of letters of protest from concerned citizens over the closure have time and again maintained that issues of education policy are not their responsibility and that they are in no position to act until specific proposals from the superintendent and the Board of Education are brought before them. It's no doubt convenient to maintain this position for political cover, but it is disingenuous for this board to pretend they don't exert influence over the formulation of policy presented by the chair and the superintendent to the Board of Education in the first place. The forum for this influence are the chair/vice chair meetings regularly conducted between members of this board, members of the Board of Education, together with the superintendent, the county manager, and members of their respective staffs. These meetings are carefully structured to avoid meeting the full requirements of the North Carolina Public Meeting Law. They're not advertised, they're not open to the public, and few written records are kept of their proceedings. But there where policy is discussed and formulated, return to the boards for discussion and approval with the appearance that it is a product of an organic process involving public inclusion, full representation, and debate, when it is in fact the product of a tightly controlled backroom, dealing and conducted behind closed doors. While it's easy to understand the expediency and perhaps the efficiency this creates in the budget process, it acts to subvert the ability of the superintendent and the board to independently formulate policy that best meets the needs of teacher, students, and facilities that house them because of financial and other expectations brought to bear outside of public notice and scrutiny. While this might seem to some acceptable as a management tool to control the budget process and restrain school spending, that can only be justified to the extent that our public education system is adequately funded and those involved are transparent about how the process actually works. Washing your hands of an issue such as the closing of a school by claiming you have no authority or influence over the decision, or the process doesn't clear that bar, deferring maintenance on our existing schools to the point where fear of system failures can be used to justify vacating or closing them doesn't either. You may claim that these meetings are harmless, merely held to facilitate communication and exchange of ideas, but without records, how are we to know their content or their effect? The county has not only the privilege, but also the obligation under state law to provide an education for our children, an education that must be first and foremost in the best interest of students in the communities our schools serve. It's not enough only to provide whatever education the county feels it can afford, whether it's for new schools, maintenance, or operational expenses such as teacher supplements. Equally, the superintendent has an obligation to demand this from the county. It's not too much to expect all discussions concerning capital projects, operational funding, and school budget should tape place in the full view of the public. And lastly, the funding for teacher supplements, leaking the funding for these supplements to the closure of a school is a false choice. Surely, this board can find both the means and the will to do both. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Fries Faggert.
I'm Nancy Faggert. I live at 139 Palisade Drive. I would like county government to be proactive in supporting the smaller elementary schools in Center City Concord. Citizens in this area have paid taxes for decades and supported new school construction across the county while their schools have received minimal maintenance and are in danger of being eliminated. The choice of smaller schools produces positive outcomes for the community. Many parents want this option. They do not want their children lost in huge elementary schools. A contentious issue, yes, but I recommend a time of discernment for our county government and pray for wisdom and truth to flourish among all levels of government. We all want our way. This issue is polarizing. Somehow, we need to find compromise and figure this out. Right now, it's like the Battle for the Bell being played out between politics and education. Education decisions should be apolitical. I urge us to come together in the name of peace and unity. We must seek out those with whom we are in disagreement and strive for reconciliation. The Board of Education depends on you for their capital needs. Commissioners have a right to question the decisions and judgment of that board and Cabarrus County school staff since you allocate the tax dollars. I attended Cabarrus County's Government 101 and the FY '20 budget breakdown last Friday. I learned so much about the budget process and the diligence of county employees. For instance, the debt service of the courthouse is significant but necessary. Also, land acquisition for building new schools in the western-growth part of our county is essential. In order to relieve the stress of debt over the next few years, it might be responsible to buy land for new schools in the west and invest in a... to buy land for new schools in the west and invest in a smaller school-building project such as Beverly Hills Elementary School before actually building the new middle and high school in the growth area. Beverly Hills Elementary School already has the land. It's just a matter of investing in a smaller school project. While I was at the work session, a fellow participant suggested grandfathering in the smaller elementary schools in Center City. This gives our county diverse options for education, making us a desirable place to live. Other areas, such as Gaston County and New Hanover, have supported the presence of neighborhood schools. There is considerable research and evidence that smaller schools improve academic achievement and enrich the learning experiences of the student. More importantly, the Morrisburg site study shows Beverly Hills Elementary School to be more affordable than previously thought. Let's prize personnel, assure student success and safety, bring in the resources, and give Cabarrus County an exemplary reputation for innovation and creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all the cards that we have for informal public comments tonight. So we will move now to our consent agenda, which consists of items, all of which have been discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. So do I hear a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda as presented?
Chairman, do we need to remove from the consent agenda the item 24 that we've already taken care of?
We did. We did that when we approved the agenda.
When we approved the consent agenda, it would be without that. So you did it already?
Right.
In your motion. Okay, I'm with you now. I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't do it exactly in traditional order, but we did.
Well, if you hadn't got a second, I'll say.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to new business. The first item on new business is the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 Cabarrus County budget. And first, we would ask Kristin Jones to make a presentation about changes that have been made to the presented budget over the past months that we've talked about it.
Correct.
Or actually, one month. It was presented one month ago.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct. Thank you, and good evening. Like Chairman Morris said, I am here to present a few final changes prior to the adoption of the FY20 budget. So you all should have three supplemental handouts at your stations. Does everyone have those? Yes, okay. So I will start by going over the first handout, which is the proposed capital and deferred maintenance project list that will be funded with the proposed two-cent tax increase. A suggestion was made at the June 3 work session to move the $200,000 that we had originally allocated for Camp Spencer Improvement Projects to be funded through the Deferred Tax Collection Fund, where the first phase of this project is also being funded. So therefore, we are proposing that the $200,000 for this project goes towards land banking efforts. You will see this proposed change highlighted in yellow on your first handout there. So I did just want to note, the total funding amounts aren't changing, just a shift between projects. But that was a change since the last time I presented that list to you, so I wanted to give you the latest and the greatest. So are there any questions?
I'm gonna have to admit that I was glancing down and just, which project went away and went to land banking?
So it was the Camp Spencer Improvement Project. You'll no longer see it listed, but you'll see the $200,000 added in land banking, and it's highlighted on the sheet.
That project will still be completed? It'll just be funded through a, through a different budget?
Right, the Deferred Tax Collection Fund.
Okay, any other questions for Kristin?
All right, so I will move.
I do have one.
Go ahead.
So the, and I think we talked about this the last time we were, were together, but so the, the projects listed for Cabarrus County schools, those are the projects they gave, that's in their order that they've given us?
Yes, by their priority ranking.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So the, the next item I want to draw your attention to is the final changes spreadsheet for the general fund budget. So it should be the second attachment in your packet. You all are familiar with this spreadsheet. I've presented it a couple times now at, after the budget workshop and a work session. Rather than showing you all of the changes that have been made along the progress, because we've already worked through those at each step in the process, I'm only showing you the proposed changes that came after the June 3 work session. So I will note, too, there's no overall funding changes, it's just shifting between accounts. So the final changes in the green reflect the additional quarter percent for local teacher supplements for Cabarrus County schools. This will take the Cabarrus County-funded portion of the local teacher supplement from eight percent to 8.5 percent. You will see an increase in Cabarrus County Schools' regular instruction account for the amount of the additional quarter percent supplement, with the reduction coming from the Board contingency line. Are there any questions on those proposed changes so far? Okay. So the remaining changes in blue are based on the state estimates for the average daily membership allotment. So based on this update, the reduced amounts for Cabarrus County Schools and charter school funding were updated with an adjustment of $161,325 going to Board contingency. This contingency could fund the final ADM count, that average daily membership allotment adjustments after the count, the final count comes out in November. So again, no overall funding amounts, it's just updating the ADM allotment and placing the remainder in contingency for updated charter school funding. Any questions there? All right. So the third handout shows the final changes proposed within our fire districts fund. So these changes reflect an update from our tax department on the assessed valuation. So you will see the updated valuation hitting each applicable district in the peach color on the spreadsheet, or the orangey color. We also have three fire districts proposing property tax increases this year, and they are Flow Store, which is requesting a one-cent tax increase, Midland, who is requesting a two-cent tax increase, and Mount Pleasant Rural, who is requesting a one-and-a-half-cent tax increase. So below the peach color, you can see, updated in blue, is the effect if the property tax rate increases were to be approved, the additional revenue and then the allotments that would go to each of those fire districts. So just in closing, I just wanted to note that these final changes are reflected in the budget ordinances that you have prepared before you for the final budget adoption Any questions on fire districts? All righty, thank you.
We've done it so much. Kristin, we've done it so much in the last six or eight weeks, we probably got it memorized. Thank you.
Well, and I think what Commissioner Schu said is true. We spend a tremendous amount of time talking about the budget. We had the budget presented here at our regular meeting last month. We have had two budget workshops since that time where we talked about a lot of the items in the budget in great detail. We have also had our work session two weeks ago, which we talked about budget then. If you turn back the clock just a little bit, we actually started talking about budget back in January or early February of this year with our Board Planning Retreat, and, and that process goes on all, all year long. And so I wanted to, I wanted to mention a couple of things. I think, or I worry sometimes that, that we spend so much time working on the budget and talking about the budget, that, that perhaps we don't convey it to the public as well as we could. And so I kind of picked out just a couple of highlights of, of things that I wanted to, to point out that we accomplish in this budget. And of course, we've heard, heard a lot of discussions. We've, we've heard public speakers tonight talk about supplements for the teachers, and we've had a lot of discussion about that as well. And so one of, one of the questions that, that I've asked throughout the process, well, exactly how much are we spending on, you know, what are we paying? And, and it is not a simple yes or no kind of an answer, and there are all different kind of variables depending on the levels and grades of, of teacher pay, but bottom line is, the total is $15,223,800. Fifteen million, $223,861 are what we paid in supplements in 2018 to Cabarrus County Schools. And this budget, as Kristin just described, includes a one-half percent increase in the Cabarrus County School Supplements, which is about close to $700,000. That will be increased to that amount. And then the Cabarrus County School Board has agreed to match that amount, which takes that total increase to about a million, 1.4 million, which will increase our teacher supplement rate to nine percent for Cabarrus County Schools. We have been working diligently each year for the past number of years trying to raise that up to get to the state average. As we have done that, the state average has moved up as well. So when we, when we hit that target we initially set, the, it's kind of like the who moved my cheese scenario, but, so, so we are glad to be able to have that full one percent increase, which helps us get to the target a little bit closer. The, I think a natural question that a lot of people that might be watching would say, well, you talk about supplements for Cabarrus County school teachers, how about Kannapolis City Schools? Because that's a part of our responsibility as well. The way that that funding is handled, their, the Kannapolis City Schools' supplements will be provided through their ADM split, which is average daily membership. It took me a long time to remember what ADM stands for. But the, the way that, the way the law reads, Cabarrus County has to divide its funding of the school systems based on that ADM split, which is based on the average daily membership, the number of students. So eighty-nine percent goes to Cabarrus County Schools, and eleven percent goes to Kannapolis City Schools, based on the number of students. That means if we allocate a million dollars to Kannapolis City Schools, then we have to allocate approximately $8.9 million to Cabarrus County Schools. And I keep looking at our finance director out there to make sure she's not shaking her head no. So far, I'm getting good vibrations back, but that, that's what governs that. So by virtue of us raising the supplements for Cabarrus County Schools according to that ADM split, a proportionate amount will also go to Kannapolis City Schools, which I think in this increase is about $101,000 for their supplements. Some of the other things that we've been able to accomplish for Cabarrus County Schools, we're providing two new activity buses, we're providing security camera upgrades system-wide, a roof replacement at Mount Pleasant Elementary School that's just over a million dollars, their new timekeeper service, service, tennis court resurfacing at one of the high schools, and then various other capital outlay projects which total approximately $900,000. That includes roof repairs at Concord High School, mobile roof repair at Mary Frances Wall Center, a security vestibule at Mount Pleasant High School. And then, as was discussed in some of the comments earlier, we're looking at land banking for future schools and parks. We've set aside $2.2 million for that, and that is just basically, it's becoming extremely difficult for us to find pieces of property to locate the schools to accommodate growth. And so when we have an opportunity to tie that down, we're trying to do that. We have also had, we're also looking for, for parkland. That's something that our citizens, I think that was one of the number-one things in our last citizen survey, was people value green space and recreation, so we're looking at that as well. We funded complete replacement of the Mount Pleasant Elementary School electrical system. That's about $568,000, and we have plans in the work as to how we can finance the next needed schools for growth. That has included some funding for Kannapolis City Schools, for the AL Brown High School Cannon Gymnasium. They have some structural issues there, and we're trying to work with them to, to address Capital improvement projects for the county itself. We have two items, only two items on that list, and one is an operations center that we're in the process of purchasing and equipping for $815,000. And then the Sheriff Radio Communications Tower is $160,000. Forty-seven percent of our general fund is spent on education. That includes educational debt service, which runs $44,235,000 a year, and that also includes Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I thought it was equally important to, to mention some of the, you know, projects that we were not able to fund. And of course, we would like to fund all of them, but there was over $45 million requested by all three of those school systems for roof replacements, HVAC replacements, electrical upgrades, et cetera, that we were unable to fulfill. There are deferred maintenance projects for the school system that totals over $53 million that we were not able to fund. We were not able to fund future phases at Rob Wallace Park. We've talked about a public safety training facility. That didn't make the list. Human service building. We've had discussions about a senior center and a library on the west side of the county. That didn't make the list, nor did upgrades and expansions at, at parks, Vietnam Veterans Park, Frankless Park, and Camp Spencer, which we were able to work in one project there. And then, then we've talked about expansion of our libraries. Mount Pleasant, Midland, and Harrisburg all have space requirements. Upgrades to our senior center, and then some improvements to the Carolina Thread Trail. And of course, there are many other things, but those are some of the things that we have talked about that we've not been able to fund. Fortunately for, for, we've had a lot of discussion about the Mount Pleasant Library, and we have been able to identify some funds through a special fund to, to move forward on a feasibility study on, on looking at, at what, what our goals need to be there. So we're happy about that. But, you know, I say all those things just to, to convey how seriously the commissioners, all of us, have considered all these items, and it's not, it's not a real quick, flippant type decision when, when we, when we, when we go through this budget process. So I think that, that our staff deserves a tremendous amount of credit. They, they provide, I mean, you, you wouldn't believe the, the type and number of questions that we ask, and they're, they're, they're excellent in, in getting us those answers. And so before we, before we open the public hearing, I would, I would open the floor for, for any other commissioners that might have comments or, or might want to comment on things that I may have missed in, in talking about the budget.
Chairman, I can just make just a couple of comments, if it's all right. This is not really planned, it's just the way it is. You know, you're looking at this year's budget You know, you're looking at this year's budget, proposed budget, two hundred and seventy-five million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars is the proposed budget. And with all of the things that didn't make the cut, all the different things that you mentioned, plus I'm sure there's a lot more, the budget could be double that, or even two and a half times that, and it might put a dent in the needs. But you got to be within reason, you know, there was a two cent tax increase last year, and a proposed two cent tax increase in this budget, and, you know, it's going to help us do a few more things, but we felt like, and I can only speak for myself, I felt like that it was important that we do this tax increase that we're talking about now for this budget, to do it now versus looking at it in two to three, four years from now, simply because the beginning deficit of those years was going to be in the, way up in the millions of dollars. I, I'm going on memory, Kristin could probably be a whole lot more accurate than I am, but the initial deficit was going to be somewhere fourteen, fifteen million dollars before any request or anything came in, and then as each year passed, like twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and those years will come, we'd be looking upwards of thirty-five million dollar deficit to start with. And so by doing this now, it will help future boards and future staffs to not have to start cutting positions and cutting services, and we've learned from past mistakes that cutting the quality of service, quality of life issues is, is a hot topic for our citizens. And so, I feel like that what we're doing here is the, the best we can do, and I agree with Mr. Chairman, that our finance people that work on this diligently, they keep a pretty sharp pencil to make things work, and as for myself, you know, I'm sort of like Mr. Kiger, you know, I got a little heartburn with the, with the tax increase, but I feel like that it was necessary, and it's something that is in our proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I will mention just one other thing, you know, really didn't talk about, the, the fact that we're trying to, to address some of these issues this year. I think when I started on this board, I believe the deferred maintenance list for the schools was in excess of two hundred million dollars, you were school board chairman at that time. And so I think we've done an admirable job of whittling down that, that amount. I mean, there's still a lot there, but it's much more manageable, and, and I think one of the other big factors is looking at the construction of the new courthouse is really going to be a big financial strain on, on the county. We, we had conversation about that during the government 101 class the other day, talking about the budget, and, you know, I said, yeah, to be honest, and I think everybody probably said, we really don't want to build a new courthouse. It's not, it's not a leisurely type item, it's something that we have to do. It's something, it's kind of like building schools for growth, you know, you can't sit the students in the parking lot, and we can't hold cart, hold court in the parking lot, and so the building is full. We're, we're approaching fifty years of usage of that building, and it's, it's done extremely well. So that's one of those things that we're going to, to have to do, and, and we'll work through it and we'll get it done, but it's gonna, it's gonna put some strains on, on some of our finances. And so, if there are no other comments from the commissioners?
Chairman, I want to say one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Because it was, it was brought to my attention tonight, Mrs. Beyande, you called me out there, you know, on some of my former meetings and things, and I do support teacher supplements, one hundred percent, then and still do now. And then somebody else said something about putting politics involved, and, and I can honestly tell you that, in my opinion, it's not about the politics part, it's about the money. The same way it is at your home, your individual home, you bring so much money in, and so much money goes out, and you can't send more out than you got coming in. And so that's really where it's at, it doesn't have anything to do with politics, as far as I'm concerned, because, you know, I do what I can, as good as I can, to make good decisions for the citizens that put me here, and I try to keep the politics out of it, to be honest with you, because it's all about the taxpayer, the money, and how we are good stewards of that money as best we can with what we got, and our county manager and his staff, you know, if it don't get by him, it don't get to us, and I promise you, a lot of things don't get by him to start with, to even get to us. But I'm real proud of what has been accomplished here, and I think we got great things to look forward to, Mike. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments, at this time, I will open the public hearing for anybody that would like to comment on the proposed 2020 budget. If there are those that would like to speak, you may come to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve Cabarrus County budget ordinances for the general fund, Cabarrus Arena and Events Center Fund, landfill fund, the nine-eleven emergency telephone fund, the health and dental insurance fund, and the worker compensation fund, liability fund for Quinny. Motion to adopt, now that's a separate motion, is that right, you want the two motions?
Uh, we'd need one motion for the, for the general fund, and then a second motion for the fire districts.
Well, I'll move for the general fund.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there, is there additional discussion?
This does include the update that Kristin gave us with the extra half percent?
Yes, yes, it does.
Uh, excuse me, extra quarter percent.
Extra quarter percent, which makes it a total of half percent. That is correct. Mm-hmm. Okay, any other discussion?
I would like to ask what the total tax increase would be.
The total amount of the tax increase, the two cents?
Two cents is the total increase?
Yeah, and Kristin, can you? That's written on one of these sheets, I'm quite sure.
Four, around four point six million.
Four point six million dollars. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, and we will now move to the issue of the fire district funds, which Kristin has given an explanation of that, and shown, and given you the sheet with the increases.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fire district funds, which totals five million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
And that, that approves all of the increase, tax increase request? Correct.
That is correct, yes. Okay, and we move to item G2, fiscal year economic development allocation, and we do need a public hearing. Now, is, is that for the total, or is it, have they got?
That's just what you need to, it needs to be approved separately.
Yeah, let me, let me get to the...
But it's part of the budget, it's not...
It is a portion of the budget.
That's correct, it's the four hundred thousand dollar contribution to the D.C.
Yes. Okay, so this is item G2, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, the county must conduct a separate public hearing for economic development appropriations. A funding plan is approved during the public hearing when each new incentive, economic incentive is approved, and now one is required for the county's annual appropriation for the contribution to the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. And that public notice has been advertised, and the amount of that allocation is four hundred thousand dollars. And so at this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I think this does not require a vote, as it was included in the budget. Okay, and so next, we move to item G3, economic development investment, Project SIM, and we are glad to have Paige Castredale to tell us about that.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to present Project SIM to you tonight. Fly Right is an aviation training company that's currently located at 7075 Aviation Boulevard Northwest in Concord. They would like to purchase an additional flight simulator for their facility, which would allow them to grow their business and add ten full-time jobs, additional jobs of paying above the county average wage. We're asking for you to consider a three-year, eighty-five percent economic development grant to support this project. Based on the estimated investment of three to five million dollars, the grant amount from Cabarrus County would be between fifty-five thousand, eighty dollars, and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Net revenue to the county during that same three-year grant period would be between nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. We'd be happy to answer, answer any questions.
Questions for Paige? Okay, hearing none, this does require a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak in regards to this economic development investment for Project SIM. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the economic development agreement, three years, eighty-five percent, between Project SIM and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? I think this is a, a company that, this is, this is one of those nice success stories that we love to hear about, a company that locates here in Cabarrus County, and then expands multiple times, and adds to our tax base, and adds employees, and one of the questions that, that I should have asked when you were up before is, most of these people that, that train there come from out of town, and how many hotel nights per year did you say that generated?
That's, that's right, they have, all their clients come in from out of town, so they generate six, over six thousand hotel nights each year.
Six thousand hotel nights per year, so that provides a lot of other jobs in Cabarrus County, as well as the funds that we use to promote tourism also. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to reports. At this time, we'll receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Does anyone have anything they would like to bring forward tonight? Okay, any other general comments by board members? We've, we've already talked a lot tonight, you got something?
Have, I didn't mention this during the budget comments, but I'm, I'm having a second chance, I think I will, so I'll be very brief, which sometimes is difficult for me, but between Susan and Lauren and Kristin, who are sitting here, and how many ever different people with them that work day in and day out, starting in October, they really do put a lot of time and effort into the, the budget, and that gets said, and we've said thank you before, but what to me is, is impressive about that group, our county manager, and this board, is that I don't think we've ever lost sight that it's not our money. It's the taxpayers' money, and that we're doing this on the, on the bulk of it, on, on property owners who are paying property tax, and I think we just, I'm, I'm glad that we don't have the mentality that all those projects that Chairman Morris listed out, well, they sound great, but somebody's paying for them, and that's the citizens that live here, and then they choose to live here, and we hope they love to live here, and that we are good stewards with their money, which I think we are. It's difficult to ask them to dig back in their pocket for two more cents. Doesn't sound like much. I've got friends and neighbors that will tell me, hey, uh, you know, boy, you did it last year, you're gonna do it again? Well, we gotta build a courthouse, and we, we, we've got a lot of needs. Well, okay, I, I understand, this is a great place to live, and if, if we gotta pay a little more, then, then that's what we do, but we, there's, it, it's not, two cents doesn't sound like much, but to some people it is, and to those people, we, we hope we're providing the services that you need and desire, and, and make this a, a great place to live. So, the, the point of all of that is that I'm glad my fellow board members, our staff and administration, we do not ever forget that it's not our money.
Great, thank you. Did you have something, Commissioner? Okay, any other comments? Okay, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation in economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point eleven, A, three, and four.
Approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session, and we thank you, and say goodnight to our television audience.